The only way I can get the meeting started is if I call it back to order.
Okay, let's make a note, you're late.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to
All those who care say aye.
Go back to the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget update. I understand Howard's out in the hallway, so Howard, if you would please come back in here. We're trying to get you back in here so we can start the meeting.
Well, we were discussing something else enough.
What's more important?
We had other issues going on.
Don't ask.
Yeah. Okay, so we will go, now we're gonna go back to the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget update. This is gonna take awhile, so.
Oh, these chairs are great.
Kristen. Take it away.
Yes, or do you need to?
Short timer's attitude.
No, there's nothing I need to do.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I know, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna start with our budget alternatives that we talked about at the April 17th meeting, and we'll go through line by line. We did update on the top part of the spreadsheet there, the 7.1 2019, what 1 mil would generate, so that's the number we're using as far as coming up with the millage rates. We show a column that says estimated millage, that one is including capital and ongoing, and then the very last column is just the ongoing portion, so you would see both there. So the first one was, again, we're still in negotiations for our police union bargaining contract, so we're currently estimating it would cost us approximately 120,000, could be more or less depending on the final outcomes, but we wanted to put something in the budget, so for that particular negotiation.
What we're asking is that, are you still on board with including this item and every single one, we're gonna write down the list, yea or nay, are you still on board with including this in the budget?
Yes.
We don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice on this one. This is, we've negotiated, so.
So with fire pension, we were trying to add $100,000 for stabilization, that was related to, because right now we have fluctuations from year to year, so it changes our outlook each year. With the union contract changes that occurred, we expect that in the following year, it's gonna go up, so anything not used in fiscal year 2020 would be carried over to help keep that a flat amount versus having another spike. Are you still okay with that one?
Do you wanna see the actual costs, or do you wanna see the, are you okay with the approach?
It's fine.
We approved it when we saw the actual cost, I think we're okay.
Okay.
We have an estimated 12% increase in health insurance. Originally, the budget had 6%, so this difference is the additional 6% to bring it up to a 12% increase overall for health insurance. That includes single and family coverage. Okay?
Yep. If you could all just kind of give your nods, you know, as we go along here, because that's what we're looking for, is are we still on board, are we not on board?
Yeah.
Okay?
We have a 4% merit increase for general employees, so this is the extra 1%.
Yes, we all agreed with that one.
For public works, adding a .5 full-time employee equivalent, engineering tech position, this is a position that will be shared with building, so building already budgeted their half.
Yes.
For fire, adding a fire training chief, and again, that includes some capital as well as the personnel.
I've been asked to ask the question of chief Briggs, what exactly is this position going to be job title-wise, and is it really a chief position, or is it a?
I've been asked also as well to really justify this, because I've had some residents just really asking tough questions, like, do we really need this?
Sure, sure, I'll be glad to, Ray Briggs, fire chief. So, first of all, do we need it? My opinion, and that's kinda why I'm here, is it is desperately needed. This is a position that we had years ago, and as things got bad, and the position was eliminated. So as to the job, you know, title, it's a training chief, meaning, excuse me, that it is an administrative spot. This position will provide oversight. As we've increased the level of service, particularly advanced life support, you know, call volumes have doubled since we had this position, and what we've got is, we've got folks that are out in the field doing, I'll just say it, riskier procedures, right, so that the level of invasive procedures, all of those things that we're doing, and I need this oversight, quite honestly. This is that, this will oversee training specifically, but really with a focus on the advanced life support. We've got, we've got folks that are in the field, like I said, doing, doing some really invasive stuff, and it's, it's just desperately needed.
I was asked, why would the, why would you or Holden not do those responsibilities as the chiefs?
Quite honestly, there's only two of us, and we are.
I'm just, I'm relaying what's been asked of me, so I'm
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, again, this, we do what we can now, we use what we call field training officers, we have some folks that we, give them a little pay incentive to do shift training, but there isn't that oversight, that, you know, again, we essentially, what we're trying to avoid are three separate fire departments, meaning like three separate shifts, and we need that consistency. This is, if you look across the board, this is not unusual, this is right in line with what other folks have.
I think one of the concerns was the title being fire training chief, they felt that it should maybe be fire training officer, or something that wouldn't, why would we need another chief?
It's just a chief officer, meaning that it's, you know, that's just a really title semantics, we could, you know, previously, we had a training captain, you could go that route, it's, it is what it is, you know, that's just a title, it's a chief officer.
I'll answer their questions, thank you.
Gary?
I think this is an imperative position that's even more important than when we had it filled in the first place. If you think just in the news, for example, yesterday, there's two fire, firemen that are in the hospital because of an incidental exposure to fentanyl on a call. They also are dealing with different types of automobiles than they were before, because of the lithium batteries, they have to be dealt with differently in crashes than they were before, and a number of things, as the technologies change, and to have somebody that keep oversight to make sure that our people are safely up to snuff on the latest training for these types of occurrences, I think is paramount.
And that's exactly the, the job description.
Yeah, it's a different day.
I think we need it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Or chief, thank you, chief.
I'm giving extra nod.
Yes, chief, chief.
Those are nods.
So next, we're moving into the police department with the, adding a dispatcher, ongoing cost approximately $62,000 on that.
Yes.
Yes, that one, that was, and residents told me this is a no-brainer.
And the next two kinda go together, so I'm gonna just explain that, is the employee development coordinator, so adding that position as a civilian will free up an officer that's currently doing that position, so that they could have a community engagement team of two officers, so they would add an additional officer with that officer by adding a civilian employee.
I've been asked by residents to actually have the chief really explain this, and what this is gonna get for the community, and I know that we had this discussion in April, I couldn't find the YouTube videos to be able to actually replay that for people, so if you can give us
Chief Pam Davis.
Sell the community.
Chief Pam Davis is upon a go-to police department, so this unit would be, and you guys are aware, because you see the watch commander's report, we have trouble areas, trouble that require a lot more proactive type work, we're very reactive, we don't have any, we have a patrol, we have an investigative unit that handles our felony cases, where, you know, thefts or burglaries, God forbid robberies, and of course, we have our school resource officers, so we don't have that unit that does anything that can go out and be proactive. I'm frequently asked, hey, put officers out on the bikes in our unit, in our area, put officers out on foot patrol, and we just don't have, we can't, I can't pull them off the street to go do that. So, they can do, they can handle kinda hotspot areas, they also can do our foot patrol. For instance, over the last year as well, we had, where we had four people out on long-term, either sick or light duty type injuries, and there was no, we were just paying overtime and wearing these officers out, and there was nowhere to pull, so we need to start building in a little bit of, of extra staffing that if something like that happens, I can also just pull them off and put them into, into our patrol. But the main reason is, we're just too reactive here in our city, and having a community engagement unit is gonna help us handle these quality of life issues that become serious long-term issues. Does that help?
Yes, I had residents, are these, these are interrelated, and that if, like, for example, if we said, okay, let's have the employment development coordinator, one versus the other.
I see what you're saying. So, the employee development coordinator right now is a corporal's position. We have a corporal, and the employee development coordinator, for those that don't know, does, just like fire chief was saying, all of our oversight on our training, they, we are mandated to do 40 hours of training from the FDLE, and all that does is cover your high liability areas. That doesn't cover things like de-escalation training that we did this year, we're getting ready to do Narcan training, when you talk about fentanyl overdoses, so we're getting prepared for that. They handle our field officer, our field training officer program, where you have to, for three months, we have an officer out there being trained by another officer, you have to make sure they're hitting all those areas that are mandated by FDLE. They do all of our recruitment, all of our, our hiring, all of our promotion testing, and just a phenomenal amount of work, where everybody's having to pitch in. Having, being able to, having to civilianize that, where we can find a lot of people that have that training experience coming as a civilian, like I told you, when I was with Baltimore, I was actually a civilian officer with them. So, we can then free up that position and put it with the, and have a double community engagement unit, two people in there, because I don't wanna send one officer out handling these type of quality issue problems and not have a partner with that officer, so that's how they're interrelated.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think anyone in our community wants us to cut corners when it comes to public safety, and I think that we have to view this, as stated earlier, much more holistically, that we just can't cut corners on this, I mean, we, we have to be at the top of our field, and we need to have it, so that also understanding that law enforcement basically catches every other failure we have in our community, ultimate law enforcement is who has had contact with it, and so the last thing you wanna do is have a law enforcement agency that's not at its best training-wise.
Gary?
I just would like to add on to that, and the same as I had said with the, and the chief alluded to, there's gonna be more pressures on our, both law and law enforcement and fire department as we annex areas. We've seen this already with Walmart, as there's been a larger disproportionate number compared to what we're used to, and I'm not saying disproportionate, in as much as the way life is, but we're so used to being put to go to aisles, and burnt store aisles, with these difficult to get in and out, very low crime areas, as we annex these other areas in, including commercial and residential, they're not gonna have the same logistics and demographics that we're, what we've been used to, and we need to, I think, be proactive so that we're prepared as they come in, and then also, our officers are dealing with many different things that they weren't dealing with before, and also complicated by the opiate issue epidemic that this nation is experiencing, it does filter down into our community also, so I think this is a no-brainer.
One of the things that, going back to when we interviewed you for your position, one of the things that so impressed us was that you were so current and so up to date on what made a good police force, and we wanted you to bring that to our community, and I feel that this is just another step in your getting closer to what we asked you to do, so I'm all for it.
Agreed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So going along with that, we have the body cameras for the police, and this was a five-year plan, so the first year is 55,000, and then ongoing, I think it was 33,000, but adding it to our capital outlay plan, we had reduced our capital outlay plan from 740,000 per year to 700,000. By adding this back into the plan, that'll bring it back up to 740,000 per year, so it's a flat 40, instead of doing 55 and then having lower, it just smooths that funding.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward with the body cameras.
We're all staring at the, at the screen, but I'm looking for head nods, okay.
You look a fobblehead.
I know.
Yes. Urban design plotter, again, this is a one-time expenditure to replace the plotter that is used for like the big maps and the things that urban design does for the city.
Okay, I'm seeing, thank you.
We talked about, I combined these two, this was bringing the in-house community branding, it was on two line items when we presented it, but it was the reduction, or elimination of the community aqua, and then adding a communications budget for our communications manager.
Yes, yeah, I think we're all on board with that one.
And the drainage program, we had already reduced the drainage program from 500,000 to 350, and as we talked, council had agreed to decrease it another 50,000 to 300,000 per year at the time.
There will be one negative.
Where are we with that program? In terms of fixing the major problems, what percentage of the, the major drainage problems have we completed?
I don't, you mean citywide?
Yeah.
Well, we evaluate, we evaluate that each year, so I can't give you that answer. I can tell you with the current contract, we, we give you each week the progress they're making on each, on the fiscal year's allocation, they're doing quite well, so we'll do another reevaluation, probably August, is it, when we have the rains, and then, yeah, and then we'll do a, take a look, see how we're doing. But we're, we're committed that we can at least go from 500,000 down to 300,000 as a good start.
That's a good start.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm adamant.
Yeah, 'cause this isn't gonna go anywhere because it's growing grass, I mean, if it was an actual drainage problem, it's something, but.
Well, 75% relates to thatching, 25% are non-thatching drainage issues.
I have no problem with the 25%.
I would also like to look into the situation, seems like lately I've had more issues related to new homes being built, and when the new home gets built, it disrupts the flow, and, and I don't understand why, because they're building, whoever it is, they cite, they cite the drainage and how the drainage should be put in, so that it should be consistent and not disrupt the flow, but we get, continue to get residents who email us about new homes, and after the driveway goes in, it's, or the new lawn is in, whatever, it just, it creates problems, and so then we're having to go out and fix something. So I would really like to
That just happened on my street, and they had to tear out a brand-new driveway, because the, the culvert under the driveway was three inches too high, and it was, they got, gave them a CO, and they shouldn't have, it should've been scoped again before it was given a CO.
Just, we had, this is, I've mentioned this before, but it went about, about a year and a half ago, one of my neighbors redid their whole lawn with sod, and they had to get the permit, and the sod guy came in, and it didn't meet, and they made him pull the sod back up, regrade, and put it back down, so in that case, the code enforcement worked. My block drains very well, always has.
I mean, an issue, we have this a lot in this district, I mean, the issue is that if you're gonna follow the new building code, and you're building lower areas, unless we view this holistically, and actually have it so that when we're doing our new home builds, have to comply with the water flow of the whole neighborhood, I think this is a different approach, you know, we've not had to in the past, but I think from this point forward, if we don't, with certainty, we're gonna have flooding every time a new house is coming up, because the house has to be built so high.
Well, it's not the house being built so high, it's what's happening is, it's the drainage of the driveway.
Oh, I mean, we're up on a mound, and the water just goes to the neighbors.
Okay.
I'm looking for a response, like, okay, we'll look into this.
I got it, I mean, we have, we're, we're gonna have a full-time engineering tech position that's gonna go out there and do more line engrades.
Okay.
Now, I will say this, when a particular property owner has had a undeveloped vacant lot next door to them, that's low, the, when the, when it rains, it accumulates on that lot, and it may be masking what the real problem is on that property owner's property.
Yes.
So then, when a house is built, now, now the issue becomes more prevalent, so it's not only the new house being built, it could mask what the current property is dealing with, and we had that situation.
Okay.
So we now have a full-time position that is gonna be out there trying to ramp it up, we will have these issues go on in the future, I mean, it, we're gonna have to deal with these, unfortunately, case by case. We do require that new houses, when they do their drainage, they have to show us how the drainage gets either into the swale and then down into the front.
Okay, so we're all in agreement then, continue with the reduction in drainage program, to, down to 300,000 then?
No, I, you got four.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to information technology, again, for the general fund, they're about 72%, 72.5% of the share of information technology, so some of it is capital, our GIS has been expanding, so we have GIS equipment. At the, at the meeting, it was approved for the whole 55,000. We have a virtual desktop upgrade of 30,000. Granicus, which was the, I'm sorry, electronic meeting management, and that one has some ongoing costs in electronic timekeeping.
So does, Brad, do you wanna talk to these, so that you can explain what these are in more detail, so that, so the residents can understand what it is we're discussing?
Certainly, Brad Schute, IT manager. Each of these items are just progressions and improvements that we've put in over the past few years in trying to move things forward. Our GIS equipment, we've been, over the past year, implementing enterprise GIS, geospatial information systems, mapping, using maps to drive decision-making and display data. And as we've established the foundation now, we've added the GIS administrative position, analyst position. They're at a point now, in order to support the departments, they need additional tools, tools that they can go out and pinpoint the locations of all of our signs, or as a new sign, new things are put in, they've got tools that can measure, because the GIS technology on your phone is, is good within three to five meters, we need tools that will measure within three to five centimeters, or a decimeter, which is 10 centimeters, so it's special tools, and these tools are a little bit costly, but it's just to be able to outfit the departments with the tools to gather information now, so they can start using the system that we've put into place. The second item, the, the virtual desktop upgrade, a portion of the computer services that, that are used in the city, rather than running on a full-blown desktop or laptop, which are expensive, run on what's called a virtual desktop appliance, which is about a third of the cost. As new operating systems have come out, and as the graphical nature of the interface has come into play, the current virtual desktops that we're using just can't support that technology anymore, they're, they're sluggish, they, they don't work as well, and so we need to be able to upgrade that equipment, so that we can buy virtual desktop units that have the graphics capability, have the processing power to be able to function. It allows us, instead of having to invest in a computer at a certain level of operating system, they're run by a server that then keeps everything up to date all the time, so those devices, it'll actually remove computers from our replacement cycle, and allow us to use those virtual desktops for a longer period of time, and, and support mostly administrative functions, but some of our other functions, in a way that, that is more economical and allows us better flexibility in providing services. The, the Granicus, currently, we use Novus Agenda for our agenda management, and we have, you know, separate programs that we use for gathering minutes for meetings, and it's, it's just in pieces all over the place. Granicus as a company is one of the leading in the nation in providing this service to cities. Granicus just bought Novus, Granicus also bought Vision Internet, which is our internet, the tool that we use for our internet to build, that built our website, so as they assimilate all these pieces under their umbrella, we're, we're looking at moving to their meeting management suite, that would allow us to use the consistency of their platform across all of these different areas, and just make it easier, more effective, allow us to provide better services to the citizens through the website, linking all of our meeting information onto the website, making it easier to follow, making videos easier to watch by tagging them to the agenda, so that you can click on an agenda item, and it'll take you right to that place in the meeting, that'll allow you then to review just that specific piece, instead of having to speed through a, a meeting on, on YouTube. So that investment is just gonna take us to that next level of, of support for citizen engagement and, and meeting management. The final item, the electronic timekeeping, we are currently, our methodology for, for timekeeping, our interface with payroll is still very manual. We've been looking at this tool for a while, up until recently, it had been cost prohibitive, based upon the benefit that we would receive from it, but the solutions that are in place now have come down in price to a point where that isn't the case anymore. We feel that the bang for the buck that we'll get in investing in it, for simplifying the payroll process, simplifying the ties to the financial side of the payroll process, we'll, we'll see benefits by investing in an electronic timekeeping solution.
This last item, we brought up during, when we were doing Six Sigma, back in 2007 and 2008, that far back, this was one of the items that came up as one of the priorities, it was way cost prohibitive. It is not anymore. Question? Is there a positive return on investment by using this technology now?
Using the electronic timekeeping?
Yeah.
I believe that, we haven't run all of the numbers, because we're not sure exactly where, but it will do such things as reduce the payroll processing time and finance from days to hours, so just in that alone, it's gonna pay for itself.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
The last item then is an additional position, a tech support position. Over the course of the last few years, the, the focus of our staff has been that we've moved the, what, our, our break and fix person in Dalton has taken on more and more responsibilities, and was recently, I think two years ago, was promoted to a systems analyst, as opposed to just a break and fix person. Because of the intricacies involved in managing our users, managing our computers, inventory and asset management, things like that, that he's taken on, have made it, in addition to distributing computers, new computers and everything, has taken a lot of his time, and he doesn't have the time to put into those quick break and fix tickets. We've noticed a slight reduction in our percentage of closing tickets, not because we're, we're not getting as much work done, but because the number of tickets that we're, we're taking in has almost gone up by 40%, and we're closing them as fast as we can, but giving us this additional position would allow us to have a person that's not gonna live in the city hall annex as a tech, but will spend a day in public safety, a day at Cooper Street, a day here at city hall, and be able to move around, and be able to be proactive in handling issues, as opposed to necessarily waiting for tickets. A lot of times, we find that, that we'll go to respond to a ticket that was submitted, and then somebody will say, oh, while you're here, I've got all these other things over here that aren't working right, or were broken, or need attention, and what we thought was gonna take an hour or two to fix, takes a, a day or two to fix, because all of the other work that's there. This person, by living in a, by moving around to the sites, will be able to be proactive on those types of issues, it's gonna improve our ability to track the work that we do, as well as give quicker response to our customers by solving those problems, not making them stack up in a corner until somebody lets us know about them. The flexibility that that'll give us, and, and again, it brings in a person into that tech support position that, that we're gonna allow to put into our advancement, and, and be able to, to plan for the future by bringing their skills up to a level. plan for the future by bringing their skills up to a level and then eventually training them into a systems analyst position as those positions come available. That'll be a good starting point for IT, to have that cycle in our staff from this point forward would be a great benefit as well.
Questions for Brad? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay. So at the bottom of the screen, we did break it out to the ongoing and what a millage rate would be related to all of these increased expenditures. The one time is there just as an amount, but if you had wanted to include them, they're at the, that's the 0.3136 there. There was a change in revenues of the CRA, so that is related to our 7.1 valuation, certified valuation of property taxes. So the increase in ad valorem is $53,270, so that could be used against some of those expenditures. Have that on the next slide just to show. So the ad valorem increase based on the valuation is a total 115,000, but the CRA transfer also went up because it had a higher increase of 62,000. So there's your net effect on reserves. So this is how the, from 417, when we came to you before the approved tentative changes, 417 after those changes, and then including the 7.1 estimate, shows you total revenues. You'd already approved 226,805 use of reserves, leaving a gap of 948,000. We always like to show you a look ahead a little bit. Of course, things can change, but especially as you go into the further years. So we just show you the proposed fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, projecting out. So in fiscal year 21, the budget gap would be approximately 1.1 million. The minimum reserves went up a little bit because when you add in those expenditures, the eight and a half percent is a little bit more. So we also updated our operating reserve numbers based on our final valuation from our audit, and then also we had increased revenue projections. Again, we're always constantly looking at those revenue projections and adding where we can. So that increased overall 404,000, less the capital outlay reserve that is planned for use in fiscal year 20 is 440,000. The approved use of reserves, again, it's rounded here at 227,000, and then less the eight and a half percent minimum reserve requirement leaves you an available balance of approximately 1.7 million there.
Can you just wait a second? Sometimes we get asked regarding our reserves, and what this shows is that we're not, when you look at our reserves, we're not in dire straits. We're doing okay. 4.3 million is what we estimate the starting point is, and you compare that to our general fund expenses. We're doing fine. However, when you take out the reserve set-asides that our finance Kristen just mentioned, that leaves us with about 1.7 million. And as you go later on in the presentation, we're only going to be recommending a very, very limited use of that because we still have things to be concerned about. She'll mention that.
Okay. So here are some things that aren't currently included in our fiscal year 2020 plan. City Hall renovations, we're still in the process of having a company that's evaluating this building. Use of reserves in helping to assist in fiscal year 2021, as you saw what the gap was for 2021, that's not currently included in the plan. Projects that may result from the citywide master plan, we don't know what's going to come out of that. And then we had a list of unfunded projects that were presented to you back in April as well in the five-year CIP plan. I did want to just show this chart, this just chart is just showing from fiscal year 2007, where we had our highest valuations at 3.1. This is in thousands. You can see by fiscal year 13 was our lowest point, it was 35.7% below 2007. We started turning around in 2014, and where we're at in fiscal year 2020, as far as taxable value, we still haven't reached the fiscal year 7 number yet, so we just wanted to show that. This chart just kind of shows you where our current ad valorem rate is, and then just looking at the core functions of the general fund, not including any of the administration or anything like that. So you have your paving program, drainage program, police, fire, and public works operating. When we did the fiscal year 2020 with tentative changes, we didn't include the one-time costs because we just wanted to include only ongoing expenditures. But you can see that if you were just looking at those core functions, what the millage rate would be if you were just looking at those compared to what we currently have. So we do really good in that we don't have assessments for a lot of, like the fire assessments and things like that. It's all included in our millage rate. So again, on our, using the 3.1969, our ad valorem went up to approximately 10 million, 10.2 million. There's a rate there if you were including the whole increase of expenditures of 0.3136. If you were just doing the ongoing tentative approved changes, you're at 0.2535 to generate 810,000. And then taking that net increase in revenue would decrease 0.0167, approximately 53,000. So again, before the approved changes, it was maintaining the millage rate of 3.1969. Staff does recommend a millage rate increase for ongoing expenditures that are approved. And we just provided some information here of what a 0.1 mil is estimated to generate, so it's about 319,000 based on the July number. Wanted to show you like what the effect is of either leaving the millage at 3.1969 or adding the millage rate for ongoing expenditures. And again, we come, from the previous slide, we combined those two bottom lines, so that's a 3.4337. So on a $150,000 home, for homesteaded residences, the maximum increase that is allowed for this fiscal year 20 is 1.9% because it's based on the Consumer Price Index. So that would be $33 increase. At the 3.1969, it's a $9 increase. And on a $300,000 home, it's a $79 increase compared to $18 at the current millage rate.
So what we're asking for you today is that on July 10th, unless we hear otherwise today, we will be bringing to you a not-to-exceed millage rate of 3.4337 based on the expenses that were approved. They are for one, they are for ongoing expenses only. The one-time expenses, we are recommending taking those from reserves, which is a very limited number, keeping our reserves decent because we still have to maintain those reserves for some of these other items that are not in the budget yet, master plan, City Hall, if there's going to be any economic downturns, any emergencies. So that is what we're going to recommend next Wednesday for you to establish as a not-to-exceed millage rate for advertising purposes. You can always go lower in September. Any issues with this?
No issues. I just wanted to give us each something. This is, this is just for us to reflect on till next week. The neighbor, the city where Jeff Bezos and Bill Gates both live is running out of money because of the fact that they rely only on residential taxes. So it's just talking about even the wealthiest of neighborhoods without raising taxes unless you have the counteract with the commercial balance, this is a reality in the United States.
So we okay?
I am continually told by people that they don't understand why we didn't do this before, so I, I think we have to do this, and it's better to do it incrementally than wait until it's a crisis and have to hit people really hard.
My only concern is that we have a serious increase coming on the school tax bill this year, and we've got, for those who haven't paid it yet, the Buckley's Pass assessment, and we're going to have the MSBU assessment for the people in the bird section, and a regular tax increase from the county, which we get every year. And I think we're looking at a significant, I mean, my tax bill is going to, is going to go up about $1,000 this year.
Not from our millage rate.
Not from just our millage rate, from all of the things I just mentioned.
But we, we have to run the city. We have to.
Understand that. Understand that. I'm just saying, looking at the big picture, for those who are looking, honestly, people don't care about what the millage rate number is. They care about what, what does it mean to their bottom line? What is it going to say on my tax bill? That's what really is important to people, and that's the only thing that concerns me. I absolutely agree, these are things we've put off for a long, long time, and to get our staffing back up to where it's acceptable levels for public safety especially, those are really important things. And we have all kinds of important things going on in the IT division as well. I mean, we have to stay with the times. I get all that. I'm just, I'm just throwing in the other side of the equation out there because people have said to me, well, you know, what are we doing about our tax bill? This is going to be crazy. But the reality is, we don't have a choice. It's just.
I also remind them that they voted for the school bond.
Right.
They had a choice at the polls. They voted for that.
Yeah. Gary?
I would just like to say that this discussion even further makes the case of why, as a community and as a council, we need to find ways to bring commercial development into our community to help offset this. This is one reason why we're going, we went into what the master plan is because we need to find ROIs. I promoted a target of 25%. I will be leaving this council without seeing that obviously accomplished, but I do feel that we do need to continue forward to work towards that type of goal so that we aren't just a bedroom community. And I just would want to point out, as I have in previous conversations, we are poised to do that if we do it properly with good sustainable economy because we're going to be having a huge increase in available water in our service area. Those areas eventually will be annexed into Punta Gorda as, at some time in the future, I would assume within the next 100 years at some point. We also have, as a council, proactively already let out a, for the initial engineering study for an increase in the waste management aspect of it, and we're making increases in our waste infrastructures. So we've been making the investments to allow those types of opportunities to come into our community, and what I feel is, we as a council in the future should do is promote ourselves to entice those types of businesses to take advantage of what we're proactively doing. We need to make ourselves known, available, and sell ourselves in that respect. So.
I would say that for years, we have, all of us have worked to try to increase the commercial tax base, and that it's going to, the discussion that we have after the Dover Coal recommendation is going to help drive us to some decisions that can, can help benefit that. And I understand what you're saying, Lynn. I, you know, agree with the sentiment that it's a lot to consume at once, and I've had residents who have commented to me in the past about, why can't you get the city's taxes down? My tax bill is high. I said, we're only a small portion of your overall tax bill. You need to call the school district, you need to call the county. Those are the ones, 80% of your taxes are from, you know, other than the city. So, you know, it's, those are the things, we're trying to be as judicious as possible, and yet, there are just some things, we've reached a point in time, as much as I have advocated to even lower our millage rate, there are just some things that we cannot avoid.
I would just like to add, I don't think as a, as a city, we have to apologize for trying to keep our taxes low. I would like to point out, we're running at 1.4 rather than 1.7 employees per thousand. This city, this staff, the city management are to be commended on running a very tight ship. That's one of our vulnerabilities if we do have a downturn because we don't have a lot of people that we should, for safety reasons and various reasons, to be able to lay off for, we've already done that and we haven't recovered from that. And it's to commend our staff and our management to do that. So we've been running very lean for, since really 2008.
And I think as was pointed out by both the police and fire chief, today is a different day. It's a different business as usual than it has been in the past.
Exactly.
And we have to, we have to adjust to that.
Well, and let's not forget, we've been very spoiled. We haven't raised the millage rate for what, six years?
It's been the same since I've been on council.
And we've kept the same level of service for all of those years, and it's time to make that change now. We have to do it. We have to.
Okay.
So we will have it as a, as an item next week?
Yes.
And it's for advertising purposes? There you go. Thank you.
Good discussion. Thank you. All right. We'll go to the last item on our agenda, and that is the presentation of the pickleball committee report.
Well, that was a great warm-up for this presentation. So, good morning, or almost good afternoon. For the record, Donna Peterman, 713 West Reda Esplanade, and I am the chair of the pickleball committee, and my committee is seated to my left. Before we go through the presentation, I want to make a couple of comments about our process. We, as a group, were appointed on March 6th. We had our first meeting March 14th and met every week throughout the 90-day period. We also met as small teams to undertake a number of projects that we are going to report on today. We also, as a group, as you can see from the mission, signed on to provide facts about pickleball play in Punta Gorda to assist the city council in determining a long-term solution. We did not sign on to make recommendations to proselytize for a particular course of action. That was not our mission, and we, as a committee, with the exception of one member, have upheld that mission. And I will also say that we, as a committee, with the exception of one person, do not support the action that that individual took. It was disrespectful to our work, and it was disrespectful to you as a council. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear with everyone. So there is our committee. This is a list of the various projects that we chose to undertake. We really tried to pursue those areas of investigation that would lead to some conclusions about what I would call urban myths that had been said about pickleball play in Punta Gorda, who plays, where do they live, what do residents think, what do players think, and was there any areas for compromise? So let's start with the fact, and this was news to me because I don't play pickleball, but this is the fastest-growing sport in the United States, and it's especially popular among our demographics, those who are 60 years of age and above. So you can see why it would be popular in Punta Gorda, and we provided some statistics about the, you know, the pace of the growth. We've also provided some information about the benefits that those who play say they get from the sport, and I think all of us would agree that these are worthy outcomes: lower risk of heart disease, mood enhancement, more exercise, increased social interaction, and improved reflexes and balance. We also wanted to find out, where can you play in Charlotte County? And again, this was news to some of us because I think if you live in Punta Gorda, you don't think you can play anywhere else but Gilchrist Park. And as we determined, there are a number of places where courts are available. Now, I will say the downside is that a number of these courts are blended courts, and in some instances, they don't have permanent nets. We have been in conversation with Tommy Scott, who runs Charlotte County's Parks and Recs Department, and they talked about the investment they are making in upgrading equipment and availability. So to me, I think this is an option for people who don't live in Punta Gorda but come from the county to our courts. We also note the fact that Pickleplex with 16 courts will We also note the fact that Pickleplex with sixteen courts will be available soon, you know, obviously, we know Gilcrest has eight. Another thing that is important to our county, since we are always looking for revenue, is the fact that revenue from pickleball play, especially tournaments on sanctioned courts, does contribute to both restaurant and overnight stays. So for example, thanks to information we got from Charlotte's VCB and Pickleplex, we're projecting that from the twenty eighteen over the nineteen period from tournament play, we roughly will generate seven point five million dollars. And also, we're, you know, noting that our mayor has gone on the record saying that she sees the opening of Pickleplex as a boost to our local tourism. And it's interesting to note that two Florida cities, one nearby Naples and Holly Hill, which is near Daytona Beach, have decided to make big bets on pickleball facilities. Naples, for example, has fifty courts, recently hosted the U.S. Open Pickleball Tournament, where they generated somewhere between seven and eight million dollars. Holly Hill, which is interesting, is building a twenty-four court facility. They want to be the Wimbledon of pickleball, and what's particularly interesting about Holly Hill is that the cost will be four million dollars, and they have a donor who gave them three. So we should only be so lucky.
I'm looking for that donor.
Yes, exactly. Give us the address. All right, we know that people like to play pickleball, we know that there are benefits from playing pickleball, but at the same time, the popularity of the game has a price, and that is the fact that communities across the country are, you know, having conflict over the establishment of courts in residential areas. So this is not something that we share, I mean, we're not the only people who have gone through this discussion. It's happening, you know, nationwide. You can see a couple of quotes, we have a couple who wants to move to the villages but is concerned about pickleball noise. We have people in Naples who are saying that Hightaway Beach is now the poster child for the dark side of pickleball. And in our packet of information, we showed you a number of communities and how they have, you know, are struggling with dealing with newly established courts. And we even have a comment from our master plan, master plan firm, Victor Dover, who said, we are not alone in dealing with this issue. So again, this is a nationwide phenomenon. So here's history of play at Gilcrest Park, and I thought it would be illustrative for us to share the timeline of how we got to where we are. So let's start with the fact that the city decided in twenty twelve to strip two existing tennis courts for eight pickleball courts. And then in twenty fifteen, somewhere between April and May, they established eight permanent courts and put in the hours that are currently established, which is eight to eight P.M. The city council started discussing sound abatement alternatives in twenty sixteen and at the same time appointed Nancy Pravsky as the liaison to the pickleball community to work on a long-term solution. In February seventh of twenty eighteen, the city council abolished tournament play at Gilcrest Park, and then in January, at a memorable meeting, the current city council voted to ban official parking on the grass to reduce the numbers of courts to four. Once Pickleplex opened, they voted to purchase movable sound abatement material, and they voted to establish our committee to help guide to a permanent solution. Fun fact for me was the fact that pickleball, since up to April, had been the subject of city council deliberations forty times. That's a lot of conversation, and just, it's probably sixty times by the time we get to this. And sound abatement material was installed on May thirty-first, Pickleplex opened a few courts June the third, and city closed four courts at Gilcrest Park. Okay, one of the things that people have debated is who actually plays at Gilcrest Park? And I'm going to go through a series of demographic slides, and what I want to point out is, as you know, with the exception of the eight hundred and fifty dollars that you gave us to do our sound study, we had zero resources. So finding these facts was an all-volunteer effort. I am not claiming that you could project on them, but I think what you are going to see is sentiment, which should give you a pretty good idea of where the three constituents that we considered in our survey, where they are. So that would be park users, Gilcrest players, and the residents. So let's start with the Gilcrest Park players. We found that roughly fifty-seven percent are Punta Gorda residents. Now, maybe it might not be that high because we also found that people are confused by where they live. So they think a Punta Gorda zip code says they live here, and we did not get street verification, but let's say it's roughly fifty percent. Okay, thirty-three percent came from other nearby communities, so that would be Port Charlotte, Northport, Fort Myers, and then ten percent were visitors. So these are your people who come in from New York for the holidays and play pickleball. Of this total group, and this was roughly two hundred and seventeen people, thirty-eight percent of that group, both residents and non, are snowbirds and hence are not here year-round. On average, these folks say they play four times a week, ninety-eight percent of them say they spend money when they come to our city, and the player revenue was judged to be approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Okay, the impact of play on constituents, in this case, the park users. Now, I will say right now that I will be criticized by not polling the people who no longer go to the park. I was kind of puzzled as to where we would find those people. So we are left with polling the people who are in the park now. And what we found was that pickleball play had no impact for sixty percent of the people who came to the park. It didn't affect their experience at all. Twenty-eight percent said it enhanced it, and twelve percent said it was a bummer. On the residents' side, again, roughly fifty percent of these people live in Punta Gorda, so we'll assume that they know where they live. Twenty-eight percent came from outside the area, the broader Charlotte County, and then another twenty-three percent were outside of Charlotte County. And the primary activity of the people in the park is walking, exercise, playground, and other. Okay, here are, here are the players' demographics. So we talked to twenty verified players who live in the city of Punta Gorda and who are